Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, June 10th, 2024, and we're going to start the meeting at 7:02. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll move on to public speak. And we'll start with Mike Palazzi before you take another bite, Mike.
Oh, you can see me. No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Kathy?
Nothing other than I wanted to say a very nice agenda this evening. Thank you for that.
Okay. All right, Linda Fish?
All set. Thank you.
All right, Louise Goodwin?
I'm all set, but Joe King is here and he may have something to ask. Hang on.
I had, I had noticed that in the River East, one of the towns had an ordinance, I believe, to keep the advertising signs that you see stuck on right of ways. And I don't know, do we have any ordinance like, like that? Eric, Jeff, I don't, you guys know anything about that?
Not for that specific issue. I know there's signage ordinance out there, but we can look at that, Joe. Joe, if you sit there and you put something forward, we can look at it.
Something like, I mean, like I propose, we have ordinance banning those right of way signs put in by private companies. They're in the way for Jay as well to do this.
Okay, you do that. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Diane Granier? Not working yet. You're good? Okay. All right, someone. Let's try to go through this and see who's causing us back issues. I think somebody just muted themselves. So that's good. Thank you.
I think you skipped Linda Fish.
I did not. I asked Linda Fish. She was good. Eric, I'm going to ask then, I know Jeff Murray brought it up, but can you please make sure that the town of the Selectmen Minutes meetings are not special meetings? They're regular meetings? Can we get that out of there for the next time it's happened twice? And both times we've not included adds and deletes, and I apologize for not catching that. Jeff Murray, nice catch on the special meeting. So we're going to add and delete something pretty quick. I'm going to make a a motion that Eric, where is? Which is the one item you want to move?
So I'm going to suggest that you move executive session to pretty early in the meeting agenda to discuss union and just leave it as union negotiations and go from there and invite myself and Cheryl into the meeting.
Okay, and is there an item?
15.
I know that. I know that's executive session, but is there an item on the agenda other than the executive session that we need to move for Cheryl?
You could also move what is item number 10, the treasurer's report up and make that right after the executive session.
Okay, so I make a motion that we move executive session up to item 2A. And we move item 10 treasurer's report up to 2B. Anybody want to second that for us?
Second it.
Okay, is there anything else, Eric, that we should move related to Cheryl so we can get her on and off as quick as possible?
Uh, no, I think that should be it.
Okay, anybody have anything they'd like to add or delete?
Do we want to discuss the ordinance, the minor ordinance down at the ball fields for the dogs?
Yes, why not?
Yeah, we need to add that.
We'll add that to new business, 8I. Is that acceptable, Jeff?
Yes, it's fine.
8I.
I just saw there was a lot of complaints online and, and in social media, and so we should, we should address it at this meeting.
All right, so you're making a motion to move dog ordinance discussion.
I'd like to amend that, dog ordinance and littering ordinance discussion.
It needs to be added.
Eight I, dog and litter ordinance.
Okay, a second.
So Jeff Murray made that motion, Paul, a seconded it. So we now have three items to move. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of moving executive session to 2A, the treasurer's report to B, and the adding a dog and litter ordinance discussion on 8I. All those in favor?
Bye.
Make a motion that we come out of executive session. Second, first, done. All right, let's move on. We're moving on to item 2B, the treasurer's report. So Cheryl, if you can review the or the documentation that you provided us in our packet.
Yes, um, in your packet, well, when, when I send all the items over to Kate, there is a PDF of your budget to actual. There is also an Excel format of the budget to actual. The board at finance, several members had requested that I send over it in that format so they could change up the font and be able to read it a little bit better. Your report has a lot of pages and it's a little bit difficult sometimes to read. You also this time have a balance sheet within your report. And the reason we have a balance sheet now is the auditors had released the audited financial statement. All of the journal entries have been made. So that means that the report that you are receiving currently, although it's marked as an interim because it's the new 2324, you will receive a balance sheet currently while we are getting ready again to have another audit. All entries have been made. All of the do to do froms have been included. And we're still, we have a few items that were overspent in the budget. But that's not unusual. Normally by the next two weeks, I know Eric and I are meeting tomorrow potentially to look over some of our requests for transfer that I will give to the Board of Finance at their meeting at the end of the month. I will be attending that one to request. We have notified departments that all bills have to be submitted to the treasurer's office for payment for the 2324 year, no later than August 15th, unless permission is given or there's an extreme reason why the bills could not be presented. Any bills presented after that date will go to the Board of Finance for their decision on whether it's going to be in the 2324 year or the 2425 year. Everything looks good. We've gotten a lovely amount of interest income, if you guys have all managed to see that from placing our funds in the stiff account. So Eric and I look at that on a monthly basis and we move whatever we can potentially move over to the stiff from our current banking institution and move it back as needed to pay current operating expenses.
Cheryl, one, one thing, I'm looking at your ballot sheet, just a quick question. Other communities, do they move all of their funds into the stiff account? I mean, right now we have, you're at least reporting that there's $1.5 million sitting in the AES operating fund, operating account. Is that accurate?
No, it is not because I, I get their documents about a month after. So the documents that you have there, I don't get all of their, I can't see everything that's clearing or everything that's being affected into their AES checking until I get the bank statement, which Eric had been obtaining for me. And then when we get, Eric assigned check runs for them, we do enter them in, but we certainly are not. I do not have all the information for the 2324 year. I did meet with the finance director for the school about two weeks ago, and we have a plan to align our books before the audit and review our numbers to make sure what they have is what I have. And then we have spoken about trying to come up with a plan between she and I to attempt to reconcile on a monthly basis, but we're still working on a potential procedure for that.
Okay, understood. But can you, at some point in time, get us, even though it might not match the financial statements, can you get us the most recent reconciled balance? Just so we can understand, because what I'm, what I have in my head is, you know, there's 2.5 or 2.8 million dollars of money that's still not collecting interest. And if it can be shifted even somewhat, that's a significant more portion of interest. So.
Yep, I, I understand. We are their budget, they receive and please correct me, Eric, if I'm wrong, whatever their budgeted amount is approved and adopted by the citizens, they receive over 10 month period. Is that, is that right, Eric?
That is correct.
So I can't, I can't, you know, I can't say that you've got $600,000 sitting in your bank account. So no, I'm not going to give you your 300,000 or 400,000. I, I don't know how I would be able to, to tell that to the school that I'm going to invest it for you and only give it to you when, when I think you need it. If the board has some questions, I'm, I'm willing, but I can't make them give it back to me.
I'm not, understand, understood. But what I'm saying is it's, it's something that we have to look at as a community to sit there and especially where the interest rates are where they're at and try to maximize what we're doing. So we can't make any decisions or talk in any educated manner until we understand what the balance was at the last time they reconciled. So if you can, just provide us the balance at the last time they reconciled. And then we can all look and just say, hey, maybe our apportionment of our funding is not accurate. And we can do it in a better way. It has nothing to, in my head, has nothing to do with the budgeted amount or do they get their money or not get their money. It's, it's timing. And if we as a town can sit there and keep more money in an interest earning account, we're all better off. So we just need a balance number so we can understand, like maybe a list of whatever monthly reconciliations they've provided you and just sit there and just tell us the number, like 400,000, 600,000, a million, whatever it is, it would just help.
Yes, when I, I will be in the office on Wednesday morning. I will go through my folders and see, I'm pretty sure the last one that I received from them is March, but I am not 100% sure. I certainly will look. And whichever one I have, I will scan it. I'll have it scanned and I will email it to you, Jeff, for your distribution.
Okay, no problem. All right, any other questions? Anybody has? Okay, if we don't have any other questions, then I think we can allow Cheryl to leave us. Anybody going once, going twice?
No, thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I will talk to everyone later. Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to move on to item three, Board and Commission Presentations, the Library Board of Directors. Is that on by mistake?
Uh, I actually don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But if none of their directors are here to speak, then I would say yes. I did get something from Kathy saying the final contract for the bathroom renovation is ready to sign. I have not reviewed it. She did email that to me today. I will get to that at some point in the next couple of days.
Okay, and.
I'm on the Board of, Library Board of Directors. And I think that, that item was from last month when Jeff Ballard was going to talk about the Burnet Brook, the Burnet Clock. And he's not in here and we're not prepared for anything else.
Okay, I will say that the library threw a wonderful retirement function for, and I'm going to say the name is Kathy Camp, Kathy Campen. Kathy Campen is very nice. 25 years as the children's librarian. It was very nice. So Eric attended.
She's going to be hard to replace. Lisa Kurtz is going to be filling in that position. She's already done it for a while and it's going to do that for the summer anyway.
All right. All right, we'll move on to that. Eric, item four, appointments, anything?
As far as I know, there are any appointments. Next month, you will have a series of appointments to make for the advisory committees for the senior center director. Those are the live one.
Yep, item five, resignations.
Yes, I was, Jim Halcy told me verbally that he would submit a letter of resignation. But he's willing to stay on until we can find his replacement, which is a big help. You know, again, I think I'm asking for the maximum amount of flexibility and trying to find that replacement because they're very hard positions to find and fill today. So we're going to go after advertising it directly locally and then also pursue potentially hiring Tai Chi to provide that person to us as a service. So I don't know how that's going to work yet. We're basically going to try all approaches we can because I anticipate based on problems other towns have had that that will be a difficult position to fill.
Okay, do whatever you need to do if you. Okay, we'll move on to item six, Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, so I gave you all my report individually. I apologize for not making it in the packet. I will give it to Kate so she can put it, or no, it didn't make the packet. No, it did not make the packet. Sorry. So what I'm going to tell you is I'm just going to kind of summarize what was in the packet so that you have it. The first thing is under Town Hall Operations, Willie and Susan are going to start re-glazing and re-scraping the windows on the museum slash Old Town Hall. That project is going to start very quickly in the next week or two. Just as a reminder, I will be on vacation the weeks of June 17th to the 21st and June 24th through the 28th. Although unfortunately now I do have a funding meeting that's mandatory for one of the grants. So I will probably briefly be in on the 27th or, or at least call into that. In terms of that, I'll make sure this Friday before I go that I've updated all the payroll. So, so that portion will be done from my perspective. Jeff, I'm going to give your phone number directly to, to Chris so she can call you when she need checks signed. So there'll be at least one check run during that, possibly two during that week. So hopefully you will be around because right now the only three signers are you, myself and the superintendent Val. So the other things I've got going, you know, as we discussed previously, we did get the grant award for the LOT SIP for Route 316, the connectivity product. I finally got a quote back to get us to the 60% design phase using the existing funds from the Legislative Board. So when we get to that in the budget, I would just like a motion from the board to authorize me to sign a contract to spend the rest of the legislative funds to get us up through the 60% design phase. And since we, since the original RFP was a competitive bid, I don't think we need to rebid it because, you know, we're going to use the engineering firm that started the work and already done part of the survey. I also had a meeting at CROG with Rob Alois, who's on the CROG planning staff to talk about how the funding in the town lines for that project works. And I was kind of wrong because I know as a, as a CROG board member, you know, we were, we were allocating funding out to the 2627 budget year. But what Rob said is they have kind of rolling funding because most projects don't get through the design phase all that fast. So the long and the short of it is as soon as we can get that design, it fully designed and approved by DOT and get the right of way stuff in place, we'll have the money for construction. So that's kind of encouraging. As you, as I sent you, we did get funded, the grant submission for the DEP Rec Trails program. So that's the fourth time I've applied to Rec Trails and the first time I got funded. So persistence pays off. I was kind of happy with that. I still haven't heard anything back from the congressional, as far as the congressional appropriation. I know we did the paperwork correctly and, and we received acknowledgement that we submitted it, but we're not going to get anything back till at least October on that. And that is the grant that would fund the, the generator that would cover the town hall, the fire department and the community center as well as finish off improvements on the community center. The propane tanks and gas piping are into the town hall and the community center. And the new, two new 1,000 gallon tanks are in. All the conduit is in for the future generator project. So everything's pretty well prepped for that project. We just got to get the money to actually buy the generator and the stuff. HVAC and heating system upgrades for the town hall will be completed within the next one to two days. All the ductless split systems work in the building. All the brick repair has been done. The system's functioning well. They're just working on, on converting the burners to propane from oil right now. So that should be done. And they're already starting to work on the fire department HVAC upgrades. That's been a kind of sore subject with the fire department. We haven't liked not having an air conditioning building, which I don't blame them. So we did finally get a proposal back from Aztec Engineering for the mechanical electrical plumbing evaluation for AES. I'll discuss that later in the project. Came out a little higher than I was expecting, but not a lot higher. You all got the information I sent you on the Freedom of Information Act request. There was also an incident at Andover Pizza in which an individual ended up assaulting two other individuals that were both seniors. So he's been arrested and dealt with. It's not, certainly is not his first violent felony apparently. So he's still in jail. Both of the victims were, you know, are recovering and are expected to recover. So it's very unfortunate. But fortunately, it, it, nobody was killed. And the, the bar slash pizza parlor has good camera coverage. So the state police have kind of a pretty full record of, of what occurred and where and why. So that's all I have to say about that, unless there's something else you want on it. You also asked me last month to give you an update on what Diane Granier was concerned with regarding the natural gas pipeline and potential modifications in Coventry. So I did talk to Coventry's Town Engineer Penny pretty extensively about that. And basically what they have is there is an existing pumping station in Coventry. Basically, I assume it's just a series of fans which accelerate the gas so keep the flow rate of the existing natural gas in the pipes high. What they're talking about doing is putting in different fans than the one they have now. So it's not anything that's going to involve trucking. There would be a construction phase, but likely they would be going up Pop River Road, not Andover's town roads anyway. So it should have zero impact to the town of Andover. Community Center update, the community center is coming along pretty well. I think we should probably discuss that. There is an agenda item later to potentially set a date for a grand opening. I would discuss anything else with that. So the, we did select a company called SLR to provide construction monitoring and inspection for the Bunker Hill Bridge project. That project is still slated to begin on February, I think it's 16th actually. There is a issue that has come up right now that the Department of the Federal Department of Wildlife and Natural Resources has added another bat to the threatened species list for all eight counties in Connecticut. And they put a very restrictive ruling in on the limit of the time of year in which you can do what's called clearing and drop rubbing, i.e. cutting down trees and taking away the debris. So we're trying to figure out how to work around that now. The last time they did that was about 10 years ago. And DEP ended up, or DOT ended up pretty much all of their bridge projects took an extra year to do to deal with that federal requirement. So we're going to actually talk to the landowners right now. We don't have the right of way easements established, although we have them surveyed. So I want to talk to the landowners and with their permission, we're going to do the tree cutting like right now, like in July and not do it as part of the federal grant. It means we'll have to cut the trees, you know, probably on the town side and not get rebated for that. But since the whole rest of the bridge is being paid for, you know, that as far as I can tell right now is the only thing that will keep us away from that being a two-year project, not a one-year project. So for the cost of taking down those trees, it seems an awful lot smarter to do that. And there's only three landowners involved. And there's only three landowners involved, so I don't think it's gonna be a big deal. But that was a little bombshell the federal government dropped on the DOT uh about a week ago. So we're working through that. That is all I have unless you have questions about anything specific for me.
Anybody have any questions for Eric?
Good good call on the trees though, Eric. And you are you gonna remind us about the bridge meeting?
Yeah, so there there's actually two bridge meetings. We're having a meeting at the Bunker Hill Bridge with myself and Jay. And the design engineer and possibly DOT to talk about, you know, what limits, what we actually have to cut down. You know, like right now, um before the the federal law actually is. Enacted. Um so um I have no doubt we're gonna be able to do that. And to say the, this has got everybody freaked out. I know. I've had a couple of meetings, one with DOT over, one with the East Coast Greenway folks, cuz that's. They've got a bunch of federally funded programs. Um so everybody's, you know, in a little bit of a tizzy. About it. Because what happens is the the federal government notifies all the states that. This is in effect and they have to put their restriction in all their grants and all the construction documents. But they don't actually know what the seasonality of these things are. They don't know where exactly in the state these bats are present. They just know they're endangered, they're found in the state, and therefore they have this blanket restriction. And it'll take a couple of years to work out the specifics of it. So it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of an unfortunate thing.
How bad is it? You know?
Brown something bat.
Large brown bat.
Small brown bat.
Okay. Anything else?
Not for my report.
Okay, everybody's good. Okay, we're gonna move on to item seven, old business, and we're gonna. Start with seven A, Community Center Construction Update.
So uh today, uh Eric Sanders sent me a construction. Uh punch list of everything for the interior of the building. I reviewed that. Scott, did I forward that to you? I will forward that to you. I was gonna go over it, walk the building with it and look through that and see what else needed to be on that punch list. For the interior portion of the building. And then Scott and I have scheduled some time tomorrow to start going over, cuz for the two weeks I'm gone. Scott will be taking over for me doing the. Construction administration stuff from our end. We're pretty close to to completion. The fact that we've gotten to the punch list portion um means we're pretty far along. Most of you have probably seen that it's paved and curved now. So uh the electrician's been in working, um leading edges guys have been in working. And you know, it's it's pretty close to to final completion. So we're getting there.
I know some changes have been made to the exterior. There's some rip rap put in, Eric. Please make sure you get with Scott on that and and the one thing that. I'm going to suggest in in. As much as possible, this is a. Public facility and we make it appear the best possible way we can. The driveway looks great. I would let you, I've already told you that, Eric. It looks great. The building looks great. Let's make sure the grounds. Maintain the same level that we all expect across everything. All right, anybody else related to the? Community Center? Old Business B, is there anything to discuss on the blight and the level of involvement?
Uh no, at this point, other than uh we're gonna need a new. Uh zoning enforcement officer who is the blight enforcement officer. So B and C, I don't really have anything to talk about at this meeting.
E-bike loaner program, anybody have any questions or issues? Okay, D Advisory Boards for the Senior Community Center?
I know we've gotten some replies back. I've asked the town clerk to collate them. They were due July one. So at our next, at the next Board of Select meeting, I hope to have a good candidate pool for you to select the members for.
Item seven E, uh Senior Community Center Director?
So the advertisement uh has gone out today. We advertised. River East, we advertised locally, we had several locals that have expressed interest to it. So we sent them the notifications directly. We also advertised on CCM. And indeed, to try to get as wide a candidate pool um as we could for that position. I did ask the. I think her official title was like Director of Community Programming at Coventry. So Coventry, instead of having one person as the director, they have a head of their senior center. And a head of the community center and a head of recreation. And then they have one person that sits over those three. So I had a good conversation with her. And asked her whether she would be willing to sit in on the interviews when uh we hire our director. And she said she would be happy to. So um I would assume it will be myself and her. And probably at least one or two members of the Board of Selectmen. My goal is as soon as I come back around July first. To collate all the responses we've had and start setting up interviews. So Jeff, I know you had said you wanted to be on that. If there are other Board of Selectmen members that wanna be in on on that uh interview panel. Please let me know.
All right, we're gonna move on to item eight, new business. Eight A is, it says a charter revision draft, but it should state charter revision draft extension. The Charter Revision Commission is uh and I'm going to make the motion, but is looking for some additional time. We have a July third deadline to present the draft to the Board of Selectmen. It may come earlier, but they would like uh an extension, so I'm gonna make a motion that um. We grant uh an extension for the first draft to be presented to the Board of Selectmen till July twenty second.
I'll second that.
Right. Any further discussion on? The extension of time? What it will mean for us is that we may be required to have a special meeting. So uh my, what I'm gonna request from the Charter Revision Committee is get you get a draft much earlier than than. It has to be presented. And depending upon what feedback we can provide before the draft is there, I'm not sure, but hopefully uh. We'll get it in advance of the twenty second and then have a meeting on the twenty second and decide what we're gonna do, whether we approve or reject any of the the items. So. That's it. Any other questions related to the extension? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, five nothing. Let's move on to A B. Motion to approve payment to Uline for community center furniture.
So y'all got a note from Cheryl. Uh so I had ordered the stuff. For the community center after a discussion last month where you said I was okay to uh. Tap contingency, given the position we're in right now overall with the budget. Cheryl felt it was a large enough order that that really needed a motion before the Board of Selectmen. That she thought that would come up as an audit flag. So we would be smarter to have the board formally motion the approval of that.
What's the amount of the Uline bills? It's like fif- eleven thousand, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand, somewhere in that ballpark.
It's twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'm sorry, I hit something thirty what cents?
Two sixty-six, thirty-six.
I make a motion that we approve the Uline bills uh for community center furniture that total twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion on that approval?
This is just for inside furniture only, right? This is not the external furniture, like the polywood stuff, any of that?
Uh I did not buy the polywood stuff. I did buy the two metal picnic tables.
Okay. Cuz I did find some vendors that had it for much cheaper than you had on your sheet, so we should probably discuss that before any of that's purchased.
Any other issues, points of discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Item eight C, select a date for community center grand opening. What's your, what's your recommended recommendation, Eric? When do you wanna do it? Pick a day.
Well, it it's not when I wanna do it, it's when you guys wanted to do it.
How about you give us the week or the two weeks that you think we should be doing it and then we'll come up with a date?
I mean, at this point, I think we're probably looking at putting it off till sometime very early in August. And it's gonna kind of depend on what exactly you want at the grand opening. How formal and who all you want to invite and what do you wanna have? You wanna have wine and cheese? You wanna have a band? What is it that you want? Do you just wanna cut a ribbon and pat each other on the back and go home? Tell me what you want and then that has some bearing on how long it's gonna take us to put it together.
I never thought of Andover as a wine and cheese place.
I was just gonna say.
Beer and nachos.
Cupcakes and uh a band, I don't know.
Yeah, why don't we make it a potluck? I I think more and or potluck stand-up picnic and bring our own. Food. And maybe have some hot dogs and hamburgers, but I I think it should be something where we invite the community to at least go and see what. That they're gonna have the opportunity to utilize, so. If you wanna do it in the beginning of August, let's just. Can we, can we coordinate this with a a senior center luncheon?
Well, the, if you do it that way, then it excludes the people that are working during the day on a Friday.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be doing it on Saturday.
That's the first question is what you wanna do it on a Saturday. If you did it on a Saturday, you could probably pick like, I think, August third. That's the first Saturday or August tenth, either of those would probably work.
All right, does anybody have any issue with August third? We'll start there.
Should we talk to the Recreation Commission too? Cuz I saw there was a concert uh coming up. I saw a sign at the School Road, so.
Well, why don't we?
Book a concert or something that night or something? It's just doing in conjunction with the hot dogs and the hamburgers. They may wanna do something for that, so.
Two dates. Why don't we pick two dates to talk to them about? Because if you're gonna, if you're trying to book a band, you wanna make sure that you have a couple of dates in mind because you have to find out if they're available.
Yeah, my thing is if they're doing a, if they're gonna do a concert or something anyways, let's do it out, let's do it all on the same day.
There's a concert already booked? Would it be on the calendar, the time calendar?
It's not on the calendar.
I saw a sign for a concert coming up, so I don't know.
Yeah, but that that's on the fifteenth of this month.
Yeah, I was just saying, I don't know, I don't know what's booked out into August, so we should probably check with them and see what they're planning on doing too. And engage them as a part of the process.
Does anyone have? Does anyone have a problem with either the third or their tenth as being the dates to investigate? I have no problem with either one of the days. All right, so uh Eric, if you can, can you get with um? The Recreation Committee Commission and see if they have any. Anything scheduled for either one of those days, and if they do, we'll try to put it on that date. So if they have a potential concert, we'll sit there and kind of coordinate it together. Then if this, if all of us would like to work together to figure out what we would like to include and. Just try to make this as community oriented as we can and get as many people as we can there.
I was gonna say, we should probably invite Steve Weger.
You know? We can invite any of our representatives. It would be no problem. Oh, and by the way, Steve Ware made the library. Yes, very nice.
Do we wanna, I mean, I don't know what what we're thinking about. For that day, but maybe do we wanna have a little entertainment for the younger, younger generation like a?
Well, let's get the date and then we'll figure all the rest out.
Yeah, I think the Rec Commission can really help with that cuz I like I I second your 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 suggestion, Paul, like the bounce house and. I mean, even get Jeff Bauer and like the the community garden and stuff, cuz people could check out the garden and a lot of things we have going on, so. I think it would be, I think it'd be kind of a good thing just to kind of bring everything together and.
They can give tours, we can do stuff with the fire department.
Well, with Eric being away for two weeks. I just feel like we have to jump on this, but he's also gonna, he also has to close in on some stuff while he's away, so. Eric, I'll work with you on this to keep the ball rolling, okay?
Okay. And the Rec Commission does have a meeting tomorrow night. So I can try to ask that question of of Carol. And get her seeing whether they have a commitment on either of those days and figure out what uh what that would be.
Anybody else have any other issues related to this grand opening? Figure we all work together and make, it'll make it work. Yeah, and we can also, Diane Grenier has a note in our chat. We can also work with the Library Committee. And we can also work with the town, um Scott Yeomans and open up the museum for that day maybe and sit there and see what we can do. Okay, I think that'll be excellent. We'll all work together on that one.
Okay, so at this point, you want some sort of barbecue slash cookout? Do what would be your preference in terms of time? Like four o'clock, noon, what is it? You wanna do lunchtime? You wanna do more dinnertime? What is it that you wanna do?
Well, why don't we plan on doing the grand opening, the shovel turns at noon and then let people s- come and go. During the day, especially if we have the bounce house and you have different things. And then if you're gonna have a concert, you're gonna have the concert all at four o'clock, five o'clock, six o'clock.
Yeah, let's let's talk to the Rec Commission for you about what they wanna do first, cuz I my my ideal times would probably be like forty-eight or three to seven, something like that.
Let's find the date first.
Need to get the seniors involved in this somehow, um find something for them. Need to get the seniors involved in this somehow, um, find something for them. Not sure what yet, but.
So let's find the date first.
Yeah, they would, they would probably enjoy the band, I would think.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the number of.
That's the kind of band you get. We get death metal, probably not.
Listen, don't, you never know. They, you know, they, they are very open minded, our seniors.
I know that the one, they have the library sponsored concerts. That those are good. A lot of seniors are at that, and those are the ones I've gone to, I know.
Yeah, I mean, is, is that what you want, or do you want to like a jazz trio? Well, I was gonna say wine and cheese and then have like a jazz trio. Playing in the, the community, uh, the big room of the building, but.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of fiddle. Like some bluegrass. Maybe we could get James Taylor.
If you really, if, if you're serious about bluegrass, uh, Amy Orlamowski will. She can hook us up with some bluegrass bands if that's the way you want to go. I don't have a problem with that. I like bluegrass.
Let's get a date and then we'll all figure out what we can do. So, and the, and Jeff Murray is hundred percent right. Have the rec commission sit there and. You know, communicate and we'll talk to the seniors and we'll talk to the library and we'll try to get everybody involved and participate in this. Paula, you're in charge of the music. My recommendation was only a recommendation. Alright, and it, the only thing I will say we're not doing is we're not do- well, I would do jazz. But we, we will have a little wine and cheese for you, Eric. That's okay. Alright.
I'll supply my own wine. I, I wine plenty, so that's not a problem.
There you go, okay. Uh, let's move on to, um. Item eight D. A board of selectmen future goal meeting. Can we do that at our next board of selectmen meeting? Maybe I have a problem.
We can. Um. But that could end up being a pretty big time suck. That might not be a bad thing to do as a standalone meeting. Um, if you were gonna do it as part of a regular board of select meeting. One of my suggestions would be that every board of selectman member. Comes with one idea they want to see implemented in the next two years. And start with that as the basis of your meeting.
Um, well, let's get some input from everybody else. Would you like to do a special meeting? Would you like to do this separately? Would you like to have wine and cheese at my house and have the meeting? I mean, what are we doing? I like.
I, I think it should be, I think it should be a separate meeting, so we don't feel rushed to get on to the rest of the agenda. Uh, I think if we dedicate. A solid hour to it or hour and a half in person somewhere. Um. Then that, we just don't feel inclined to rush through it. To get on to the rest of our business.
Um. Why don't we schedule it for August in the new community center?
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to see some emails from everybody to say, you know, maybe we're all on the same page, you know, like, maybe we just. Send a note to each other saying our top three priorities, like something we do want to work on, and then. We can just align all those and see what, you know, I mean, we may be all aligned on our priorities.
Okay, so how about before the next meeting, Jeff, we all sit there and shoot a, a. Copy all or send an email to everybody about what we'd like to see the, the town tackle and get accomplished.
Yeah, we can roll that up and then we'll hit them one by one and we'll decide what our priorities are.
Alright, so before our, our, let, let's do this. Before our July meeting, we all shoot an email to each other. And then at our July meeting, we'll set. A timeline or a time for an in-person meeting, because I do think Paula would be good for us to have this as a. In-person meeting, I think it would be good for us to have it at the new building. Um, I think it would be positive. Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any other issues on that or just want to further discuss that? Okay, let's move on to eight E. Discussion regarding the route three sixteen design. Eric, what do you got?
Oh, okay, so I apologize, I did not get it to you earlier. I only got this thing about one o'clock this afternoon. Uh, but Barton and Legudis finally gave me back proposal. Um, for just. The, to get us to basically sixty percent design phase. Piggyback on the existing RFP. This would cover full-blown land surveying, the wetlands delineation. Um, and spend the bulk of the money on site development. In other words, design of the actual. Uh, getting to a more finalized engineered design. Um, of the trend. Um, that uses up the remaining grant money that we had in our, our congressional. Not congressional legislative appropriation. Um, it will still leave us short of final design. But it gets us a long way towards it and it's probably, you know, five or six months work, um, and gets us. To the point where it goes to DOT for full-blown DOT review. Um, so that's what I'm shooting for at this point. Um, and then probably six months down the road, we're gonna have to figure out where we pull funding for. To get us to a hundred percent design, because while we have two and a half or two point nine million dollars in construction funding. Uh, lots of doesn't cover design. So a lot of the design is covered. Via the, the legislative appropriation, but there will be probably some money, town money. Um, and we can talk about that in the future, whether we tap LoCIP for that. Or what, uh, how we get there. Um, so, but what I would like now, if you guys are okay with it, is a motion to allow me to sign. A engineering contract with Barton and Legudis. To spend the last forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars of our legislative appropriation. To get that project to the sixty percent design phase.
And just so we understand, it, it is a significant amount of money. There's a contract with Barton Legudis that we're not gonna run off all of our purchasing guidelines?
We shouldn't, because. We basically, we went to RFP to hire an engineering firm to get us through this process. So, um, the, the first phase of it essentially. Was get us to the grant writing stage, get a preliminary design proposal, pick a route. Understand the major issues, um, and do initial survey work. And then this is the second phase of that, which is, we've now got the construction grant. Now we have to get a finalized design.
As long as you're telling me. That we're good on the purchasing policy.
Yes, we're good on our purchasing policy up through this point.
Alright.
We can talk about that again when we have to actually start spending taxpayer dollars, which might occur in six months. But we can talk about the timing of that and. You know, whether we wait in budget for it fiscally or whether we go after one of our existing pots and butt, but. There's nothing we're, we're doing as far as this that violates our purchase policy.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for Eric related to this? Okay, so, I'll make a motion. That we. How do you want it phrased, Eric? That we pay or that we, I mean, you've already.
I would just motion to authorize me to sign, you know, a phase two contract with Barton and Legudis.
So I make a motion that we authorize, uh, the town administrator to, uh, sign. The contract for designed services to get design services to sixty percent on the Route sixteen. Route three sixteen design project, or project.
I'll second.
We're terrible. I really screwed that one up, but thank you for seconding that bad motion, Paul. Alright, uh, anything else on this motion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on. Um. Eight F, a public information meeting for the Long Hill. Road bridge.
Right, I sent this to you separately, um, and we did put an invite up on the. Uh, I think the town's Facebook page. There will be a public informational meeting on the Long Hill Road Bridge Project. And I also sent to you the, the PDFs and the slide deck, uh, for that presentation. So it would be nice if a couple board of selectmen members came, um, but not strictly necessary.
What's the date, Eric, again?
Uh. Really good question. Look, look in my calendar.
July ninth.
I think you're right, but I'm not positive.
It's on the town calendar.
Got it. Yep. Sorry, I should add that in the packet. So basically at this, the. Uh, company. Um, will go over the proposal. Um, the reps from the, uh, Connecticut, uh, DOT will be there. And, uh, after that, um, we will select. Um, you know, kind of based on their guidance, uh, unless there's a major objection to it. Um, they have a preferred construction type. Um, based out, based on cost and longevity, long-term maintenance. Which is what was included in the packet in, in that slide deck. So they present that, they get feedback from the public. Um, it's one of the requirements and after that, uh, DOT will sign off on. The bridge type for that project. Um, and that will essentially be, uh, the thirty percent design phase. Um, for that project, um, then there'll be several onsite meetings, um. And everybody will, from the utility company on down, will provide additional information, as will all the various different departments of DOT. Um, and then it will be assigned to a company. Uh, to do the actual bridge design. So that's kind of where we are in the process for that bridge. But the public meeting's the next part.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions related to that item? Okay, we're gonna move on to eight G, Rec Trail Grant Award.
Uh, so at this point, this is just a notification to all of you that we did. Receive the Rec Trails grant. Um, which I was kind of stoked at. I did not think I was going to get it. Um, cause I had had some conversations with, uh, Bruce, uh, Donald. Um, who is one of the people that's on the selection panel, um. And this program gets an enormous number of applications, um, so I was quite. Uh, happy that, uh, they were willing to fund the design portion. Um, and the way this works is typically if they fund the design. They will come back a couple of years later and fund the actual construction. Um, there are a couple other programs we can look to for funding for this. Once we've got a full-fledged design. Um, but, you know, that's, it's nice that we were able to fund this. Because the design would have been expensive enough. I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have tried to do that with just town dollars. So that's all I got on that, unless you have other questions regarding that.
No, congratulations, great job. It is something, uh, Jeff Murray had some interesting email and some interesting ideas. We should sit there and. All think about things that potentially could happen back there. I mean. Uh. It is big property and, you know, I know you're thinking of it just the trail, but. Uh, might as well think big, Eric, and see if there's any other things that can happen with it. Um. Alright, we're gonna move on to item eight H, a discussion of the Bunker Hill Bridge. Destruction.
So the only thing I really wanted to say is that the town, uh. Has recommended to the Department of Transportation that SLR. Be retained for the, uh, construction inspection and construction management for the bridge project. Um, we did interview for, uh. You know, for firms. Um, and it took a while to get that together because the DOT had to actually approve. The interview panel to make sure that we had good enough interviewees. To make a decision that they would be happy with. Um, so we did do that. We had nine applications of which we interviewed for. And we picked SLR. Um, primarily because the chief inspector, they have assigned to the project. Has a really good track record of getting thing, these things done, um. You know, relatively quickly and, uh, and they keep the paperwork straight. So, um. Uh, we, we. Uh, had the review panel, we recommended SLR. The Department of Transportation, um, said that's fine. So now we're, we had the first scheduling meeting, uh, with SLR. Um, between SLR, Close Jensen and Miller and the DOT and myself. Um, and now we're waiting on SLR to get the, the paperwork back, um, before they can be officially hired. We are looking at advertising this, probably, you know, in the October timeframe. Again, for a February sixteenth or fifteenth starting. So that project is on track. Um, the only thing that is a concern. Is that even though it is fully funded from both the federal and state dollars. There is gonna be a timeframe between when the state dollars and federal dollars are applied for. And when they, when we get reimbursed. So we are gonna have to front the money. Um, for various different stages of this project, and we have to anticipate. You know, at some points, fronting up to a million dollars. So Cheryl and I have talked about that. Cheryl really thinks we want a line of credit at a bank to do that as opposed to just trying to take it out of the. Uh, you know, the. Essentially unexpendable fund balance. Um, so that's gonna be a conversation she's gonna be having with the Board of Finance about. Um, you know, the possibility for doing that, and we've got plenty of time. You know, it's, it's a long way off at this point. Uh. Questions on that?
Okay. Very none. Onto our next item. Item nine, approval of, uh, the. Meeting minutes for our May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Yeah, do eight. Yeah, do we miss see, yeah, for the, uh, the park.
Oh.
Dog issues.
Sorry, you're right. I did miss that. Uh, eight I, uh, dog and, um, litter ordinance.
This is something we talked about last meeting that we wanted to add and, and discuss about doing a minor ordinance about the dogs on the field. So I thought we might want to include it for some discussion today.
I'm assuming that there, there's still dogs down there. We're still getting complaints from.
Yeah, I just, I saw a post today, somebody had her dogged out on, it was actually on the, um. The softball field. They were in the fenced in area on the softball field, so I don't know. What's a good solution to this, but we should probably have a quick discussion and decide what we want to do. We also have a littering issue down there. People are dumping all kinds of garbage down there, apparently.
Yeah, but that, that's. Yeah, but that, that's been going on for years.
Yeah, I know, but I just wonder if we should put some teeth into it and then actually put some cameras up there that can record this, the activity. So.
Well, the question is, I'm all for it, the question is, what is the enforcement of it? Like, what is the fine? What are we gonna try to do? And we should think about that. Not Jeff, I'm all for it.
I mean, what's an acceptable fine?
A hundred thousand?
Two hundred fifty dollars?
Yeah, probably something like that.
Two or five, yeah.
Well, let's find out if that's acceptable, minor ordinance standpoint for the total dollars, but hey, listen, I, whatever it is, it's just, it's just how the enforcement policy of it goes forward, I mean, that's really key.
I just think we, like dumping or littering, we probably should put something in place too, because I mean, we've had issues with people dumping things and if we can find out who dumps it and we can enforce, you know, some sort of fine, then I think, I mean, it would at least cover the cost of public works, having to go clean up tires and other kind of things that are dumped along sides of the roadway, like especially where the rail trail is.
So. So why don't we, Eric, you and I can get with Attorney O'Brien between now and our next meeting and try to draft something that would be potentially acceptable to everybody. And let's talk to him about what the maximum and minimum amount of fees would be, so we have them drafted. And then we plug in the fees that we feel are appropriate so that we can ticket someone.
Yeah, we just put signs down, think like ordinance, blah, 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 two hundred fifty dollars fine for littering or, you know, dogs on the field. And the signs up and then they break it, then you know, the trooper has some teeth.
I do think though, that one of, that is not what Dennis would consider a minor ordinance.
I know.
Basically said anytime there's a fine involved, that's not a minor ordinance. So that would have to go to public meeting to approve. And I, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just.
I don't have a problem with it either, because I think the public at large is probably in support of this, so I don't think we have a problem getting that passed.
This is what we're attempting to do. It's something that's on the radar, so. The issue ends up being, when do we want to go to public meeting with something like this? And is it the only item that we're going to public meeting with? So let, let's get Dennis to draft it. And Dennis does have an issue of minor and major ordinances and what would be currently required to go to town meeting. But yes, we should be doing things like this, so. Let's, let's get the draft, have Dennis advise us what he thinks we should do, and if we have to go to a town meeting to get this passed, then we'll, we'll try to schedule it.
I think, I think there's enough people in town that are for it, that we would get enough support to pass it, so. I think we should just do it, get it, get it drafted and let's just move ahead.
Now, were you talking specifically on field or are you talking townwide or what's your?
Well, I mean, I think, I think, I think the thing for the dogs should be, you know, I mean, would we incorporate, encompass the school community center area? Because I, I don't know if we're gonna allow dogs to just, I mean, if people are gonna be using the community center area in recreation, then I think it's probably town property. I mean, a town, like we should probably designate, you know, the ball fields and probably the school proper town hall complex. I mean, because I don't have any problem with people taking dogs on the trails on town property, but I mean, anyplace we have grass or a lawn or people playing sports, it just should probably be no dogs in the area. And the littering, I think it should be townwide, like a dumping or a dumping or a littering ordinance would probably be acceptable to me.
I, I took a picture of a sign that's in Wyndham. You know, leash curb, clean up your dog, it's required by law, maximum five ninety-nine dollar fine. Ordinance and, you know, sections, blah, 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 so they have it in place down there.
Scott, could you send that to Dennis? So, because I'm sure Dennis would probably be familiar with that, so he could probably use that as a, to benchmark.
He probably drew that up.
Yep, so it'd be something we can benchmark off of.
It's a nice picture, I should send it to all of you, it's a picture of a dog and, you know, the owner cleaning up after the dog.
Okay, yeah, CC Dennis too, so he knows.
All right.
I did notice, I did take a walk around the ball field, the athletic fields. The other day, and I did notice on the outside of the fence and the perimeter alongside the river. At least four instances of dog excrement. That was on the grid, so.
Well.
But I'd rather it on the outside than the inside, but.
Yeah, I, I just don't want it on the playing, the playing area where there's, you know, there's people gonna be playing soccer and, you know, softball and other, I mean, the picture I saw today on Facebook had the dog was right in the softball complex. So we need, we need to address it.
Okay.
And that, but I'm not sure we have the authority to address that, because that's not our property.
But aren't we, don't we have a use agreement?
Yeah, but the use agreement doesn't allow dogs on it.
Yeah, but we should probably, I mean, we could probably talk to Hop River Homes and work, you know, I'm sure they don't want to see dogs on the property either, so. They would probably be supportive of anything that we put up or an ordinance.
They don't want anybody over there but the girls.
Yep.
Period.
So I think they would be supportive of whatever we did regarding dogs.
Okay. Any other issues related to this item?
No, I just want to get the ball rolling on it, that's all.
Let's go. Item nine, approval of meeting minutes from five thirteen, twenty twenty four.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Scott seconded for the discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, the treasurer's report, we did that item, item eleven, the tax collector's report. I would tell you I liked the information on the top delinquent report. Very enlightening. Yeah, there's a lot of money to go after. Okay, anybody have any other questions related to tax collector's report?
A real lot of money to go after.
Yeah.
Like almost a million with all the fees, extra fees.
Okay. Are there any refunds that we have to approve, Eric?
Uh, I thought there was one. Going down through, hang on a sec. I guess I do not see it, so let's say no.
Item twelve, the departmental reports. Assessor's report, anybody have any questions related to any of the individual reports? Eric, did we ever get with the assessor on a list of the largest taxpayers for motor vehicles?
I did not, I did ask him for that, but I don't have. So that's on me for not following up.
We get that for the next meeting? Anybody have any other questions on any other reports that were provided? I was, I was at the transfer station on Wednesday, are we having any issues at the transfer station? Even though I know it's not on this departmental report, are we good with coverage, Eric? Are you happy with where you're at?
Yeah, we are good with coverage, Dominic's supposed to be coming off his, I gotta get a release from him for.
We don't need.
He's at, he's at the end of his period when, so he's technically cleared by his doctor.
Understood, we don't need to talk about that stuff, I just want to know that you're good with coverage.
Yeah, I'm good with coverage. The one thing I do have to do is I have to get off my arse and sign the contract for the renewal, the transfer station contract renewal. Because that's coming up as of July one, so.
Has there been any significant increases in the tipping fees or anything? I mean, I'm assuming that's the contract you're talking about.
Yeah, I, I mean, there, the, the biggest thing that is up significantly is the cost to dispose of recycling. Because the recycling market is basically tank. And that's kind of why we went to the separate compactor or the separate dumpster for cardboard. Because they're taking cardboard away essentially for free, so it doesn't count for art donation for cycling. So with that, I think we're keeping our costs down fairly reasonably. There are some escalators built into there, to, to the contract, which I'm not really happy about, but they were all negotiated with the Waste Management Consortium that were part of that, which is Mid-Nirac. So I don't think we're gonna do any better. And our cost per tonnage to get rid of stuff is still lower than most of the municipalities in Connecticut. In other words, that contract through Casella is still better than I think we would get if we started pursuing other options, so.
Uh, anybody have any other questions related to any of the departments? All right, we'll move on to item thirteen, correspondence, any correspondence? Oh, okay, let's move on to item fourteen, public speak, we have Diane Griner is our lone survivor.
There I am, can you hear me now?
You can.
Oh, good, um, I don't really have anything to say except a good meeting, you guys conduct a very good meeting, I'm always impressed with how you keep it to the point, you don't get sidetracked, very professional. And makes us proud, thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
I would, I would like to make a little shout out to the residents who are trying to make some little parts of our town a little prettier. There's some flowers that hopefully will bloom and, and look very nicely, and I think the picture that I took, what did it say? One second. Oh, here it is. Picture said, "This garden was created by volunteers for the enjoyment of all," and Diane, thank you very much.
Oh. I understand, from what I hear, there were, there were sixteen volunteers that planted that garden in an hour and a half. It, it was, they did a really good job. And we are now currently looking for somebody to volunteer to mulch it, donate mulch and spread the mulch on the, on the over the garden, so. They say it'd be a thing of beauty next year for sure.
Hey Diane, I just have a quick question for you, did, does anybody contact the DOT to make sure that they don't mow that section?
It looks like a freaking garden, they, they, well, from what.
I just, people just do crazy stuff and, and then they're, I just want to make sure that they don't mow it.
Okay, I, 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 I heard that it was being mowed by the neighbor across the street. Is who had been doing the mowing on that, that piece of property, because it wasn't being mowed properly.
Okay, I just don't want to make sure that somebody doesn't destroy your hard work, that's all.
It wasn't my hard work, because I didn't, I don't.
You, you were the organizer, so.
I don't get my hands dirty, I don't get my hands dirty.
You're the organizer, I just don't want to make sure that we destroys anybody's hard work.
I want it to be, I want it to be known that I did not sit there and single out Diane as, as one of the volunteers. Just making point clear. We don't want to get, we don't want to get anyone in trouble, we want to support good deeds by our volunteers. And Eric, if you could, please make sure that the state allows the flowers to bloom, that would be appreciative. And make sure that our own internal group doesn't, you know, let's see what it looks like.
Yeah, because if it's a town, I just wonder if it's a town road and it's forking right there, is that town property or is that state property?
I think that was the basic original question.
Yeah, that's why I'm just, I'm not sure, that's why I was wondering.
The, the issue was, is that state right away or town right away? And to ask permission was way too hard for either one of those two groups. So it's from what I understand, it's called guerrilla gardening. Where you plant a garden on property you don't own. And there were many people in town, there were ten more people who said they were going to come and didn't show up that day. So we were gonna have twenty-six people there planting that little strip. It was, it was a wonderful thing, people really took to that. And I've had lots of suggestions on where I should be planting other guerrilla gardens and that's not going to happen.
So. I, I would just say, if you're going to be planting around other town buildings, before you do it, check in with the beautification commission. Because I don't want to get in another case where somebody does something really nice for the community. And then the beautification commission gets all pissed off, rips out everything they've done and redid it their own way, which has happened now twice. So I appreciate everything you've done, it looks fabulous. And I'm all for it, but just, I'm not the one you have to worry about pissing off.
With the beautification committee, I understand, the beautification committee was on board and notified about this, so they were, yes. And I, I have been asked to plant black eyed Susans down at the monument park right over here by this little thing that would look. No, like I say, I'm not a gardener, my, my gardening skills go to, you dig in the dirt till you find a worm and then you go fishing. That's, I don't garden.
One of the other things I was gonna say you should consider is that several of the manufacturers make a wildflower mix.
That was suggested.
And that's one good way to get a wildflower patch established. The problem is over time, like it looks really good the first three or four years, and then more and more weeds keep getting. So it's like, but for a short term, for a couple of years, you can make something look really fantastic that way in the future.
Okay, um, one, one of the places that was pointed out to me, which I'm not going to do, is in front of the Public Works Department where the, the big orange plow is. There's sidewalks and there's some funky little, it's like two-foot piece of grass. That gets mowed, I mean, it's very small and, which would be a great place to garden on. But I think, what, why is that little grassy area there, why isn't that just sidewalk?
You know, that's a very good question, and I've asked myself that question numerous times every group, I have.
All right, Diane, thank you very much for that enlightening public speak, it was wonderful.
Okay, thank, thank you all for all you do, and thank you for having these Zoom meetings so that I am able to catch up on all the good things that are happening in our town. Thank you.
You're welcome, I don't think there's anyone else for public speak, so if there's no one else. Oops. My phone decided it didn't want to work with me. So we are now on to, and, and Eric, that's whole, just as a side thing, the whole state document in our agenda package. The legislative actions, very, very helpful, interesting to read. Just as a side note, so we're moving on to item sixteen, adjournment.
I'm going to adjourn.
All right.
Before we leave, I just want to, I think I said to.
Before we leave, I just want to, I think I sent an email out. I won't be around next month. Um, I'll be in Iceland in the wilds of, uh, the middle of Iceland and I'm not going to be able to zoom in from there. So it won't be around next month.
All right, appreciate that. And yes, we did, I did see that. So no problem.
Have fun again. Don't jump in the volcano.
No, no, we're going into the center of the country. The volcano is way off on the western edge.
Make sure you go to the Blue Lagoon or go to a hot springs.
We're gonna go to hot springs. It's not the Blue Lagoon.
But go to.
Too commercial.
You got it. Okay, um, who seconded the adjournment?
I'll second it.
Jeff Murray did. Okay. All right, uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very much. Enjoy your evening.